One of my favorite pairs of slacks that I have, I always carry these pins in my pocket. And I'm real good. I don't normally have any trouble, but for some reason.
I've had a good day, so.
Good.
I corporate.
It's a dark blue pair of slacks.
Great light.
It's a little square about my pad right there.
Yeah.
I don't know the umbrellas every season, but it drives me nuts.
So.
Yeah.
It's never.
It's never, you know, the suit coat that's too tight or the man's you hate.
Or we, we don't wear them much.
They're probably, yeah, I mean, because I'm sorry, it is.
No, it's not.
But this is.
What's that gonna call?
The, uh, yeah, I was really.
All right. It's, uh, five o'clock, so go ahead and call the meeting to order. Uh, start out by taking role.
Commissioner Allen.
Present.
Commissioner Norwood.
Here.
Commissioner Isell.
Here.
Commissioner Waddell.
Here.
Commissioner Stallings.
Here.
Commissioner Mason.
Here.
Mayor Pinkinon.
Here.
Okay, all personnel are, uh, present for this, for this evening's meeting. Item number two, at the commissioner's request, uh, whoop. At the commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the rescheduled regular session agenda of May nineteenth, twenty twenty. Did we lose them?
Yeah, we lost everything.
Okay, we'll take a minute.
Boston me establishing right now. Yeah, we're all on hold. Thanks, you bet.
Yeah, I think that.
It's kinda like in Houston when you have a problem.
Yep.
Then it gets real quiet.
Ah, how rude.
I won't do that again.
Gerald, you got broad shoulders, you just take the blame for everything, don't you?
Well, it's kinda funny, the other day for the whole building, we have a battery, big battery backup over there, and it actually got exercised, was it Friday?
One day.
Thursday, we had some fluctuations, and it was interesting, my computer, it, it switches over in just seconds to the backup, but my computer was still messed up, it seemed like it took me thirty minutes to get it back up and working again, even though it didn't seem to completely lose power, it was just kinda locked up, so I do understand the value of battery backups and.
More pressure, really. Jerry.
Hi, Jim.
When would be a good time for me to talk to everybody?
At the end of the meeting is when we take public comments.
Okay.
Did you sign in?
I did.
Then you'll be all set up to go.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is that public comments in the study session or in the meeting?
It will be in the, it would be in the meeting, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it's a regular meeting.
This is the gentleman that has the Oakwood.
Yeah, Mr. Tate.
Bowling Center.
Yep, yep.
Mr. Jim Tate, and apparently he wants to address us, so that would be after the regular meeting.
Yeah, so we're doing this from five to six thirty, and then at six thirty starts the regular meeting, so you're welcome to stay at home, but.
Mayor and Commissioner Allen, I'd mention to him too, when we get to that item on the declaration.
Yep.
I think that's what Jim wants to talk about is with the bowling leagues.
Sure.
So if we, if you wanna let him talk then, he doesn't have to wait till all the way to the end of the meeting.
Okay.
We should let him talk before we vote on it.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, I think that would be wise.
[laughing].
After you, like, several minutes, just for informational value, right now, according to your rules, they can bowl every other lane.
Right.
Oh, sir.
Can we wait?
Please wait till we're up, and then, Commissioner Allen, if you wanted to, you could, if we wanted to expedite this, you could bring up the declaration as a point of interest in the study session and call on your friend.
That's why we have an attorney.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we're fixing to do that right now, once we get everybody on board.
That's why I'm here.
Okay.
All right, Ben and Jonathan, we've, should have video back up, hopefully you.
Yes, I can hear and see you.
All right, excellent. Mr. Mayor, you're free to proceed.
Okay, well, if there's no other questions, the meeting's over, oh, sorry. Now, now, we're, uh.
It's tempting.
I know, I know. Um, okay, item number two, at the commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the rescheduled regular session agenda of May twenty nine, May nineteenth, twenty twenty.
Uh, Mayor, uh, I'd like to discuss the declaration, and in that, some discussion from, uh, Mr. Jim Tate.
Okay, Mr. Tate?
We can get you to come up to the microphone. Thank you, sir.
You'd need to, uh, state your name and your address.
My name is Jim Tate, I live at three ten South Old Trail, Enid, Oklahoma, seven three seven oh three.
Okay.
Just a few blocks from Oakwood Bowl.
Thanks.
Uh, subject dear to my heart. Okay, according to the rules, we can have open bowling, they bowl on one lane, skip a lane, bowl on another lane, skip a lane, bowl on the other. The USBC, which is governing body of the leagues, has come out with the new rule that the leagues can bowl that same way, they can bowl on one lane, skip a lane, bowl on one lane, skip a lane.
Okay.
So, right now, the leagues would be following the exact same protocol that the open bowling does, so it wouldn't be any different. So I'm saying for that reason, might be a consideration that we could continue the leagues, it's a very vital part of our business of paying our bills and the rent and paying our employees and everything. I've got some pictures here on the phone of, uh, all the things we're doing, we put up the plastic sneeze guards at the register, uh, everybody that comes in, we take their temperature, we have, uh, some little dills that mark social distancing, six feet apart, hand sanitizing stations, we've got, uh, Enid-approved disinfectant and deodorizer. Uh, we want to, uh, we're wearing masks, we want to be as safe as we can possibly be. Obviously, we're a family, we wanna be family-friendly, and we just wanna do what's right, so that's why I wasn't gonna do anything, I would come here and ask for your, uh, blessing on us being able to run the leagues according to the rules that we have just for regular bowlers. The only difference would be that they're, they're actually leagues, but they're regular people too, and we've called them on the phone and talked to them, they want to come and bowl again, they really miss it, so.
Are there any leagues that are supposed to be going on right now, or when did they start, or when do they start?
Well, when this all happened, there was eight weeks left, so right now, all of them have eight weeks left to bowl, well, some of them may only have seven, some of them are weeks shorter than the other ones. So we just stopped, obviously, we had to close down, so we were closed down for a while, then when we reopened, we reopened without the leagues bowling. So those people come in and bowl, if they bowl in the league, we give them two free games every day of the year, so a lot of them have been coming out to bowl just regular open bowling protocol.
Right.
But they are itching to get back to bowl, and we would love to be able to facilitate that for them, so, uh, but we wanna have your blessing.
No, understand, uh, can you tell me how many folks on the league that you're talking about are from out of town, and how many are from the Enid area?
Okay, the vast majority of bowlers are from the Enid area, each league probably has one, at least one, the bigger leagues may have two or three that are from outside the area, there's some from O'Keen, probably be some from Fairview area, not necessarily, you know, like farm area.
So like, less than fifty miles?
Oh, yeah, no, we're, yeah, we're.
That's what the mayor wants to know.
We're talking.
He, he didn't want anybody from Wichita coming in, you know how they are.
Right, no, no, no one even from Oklahoma City, th- these are all just the small towns around here.
Yeah.
The same people that would come in and open bowl.
Okay, same people that would probably go to Walmart.
[laughing].
Right?
Okay. We get a lot of comment about Lowe's and Walmart, they're loaded.
Yeah, well, but the reason is, we're trying to, uh, reduce the importation of the opportunity to infect everybody from people outside.
Right.
That's why, that's why the organized sports have been delayed, so that's the reason for, for the question.
The vast majority of these people are right here in this area.
Okay, so where does he fall now? If we don't do anything. We don't do anything, he can't do leagues till what, June first? Was it June?
That's you guys, but I think that's what I heard, June first.
It's June first. June first.
June first currently, which is when phase two starts, which would allow organized sports activities, I think we said the movie theater.
If we could get a dispensation that week would be great for us, because the first two weeks we were open, hardly anybody showed up.
Right.
So it's only been the last few days that we've actually had some people come out to bowl, so we'd love to get our revenue going again, so we just wanna stay in business.
All right, well, we're in a study session, we can't vote or anything here.
I understand.
We can't vote till the regular meeting, uh, and it is.
Can I ask some questions, please?
Please, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, so with, with the, uh, the influx of, first of all, I gotta commend you with the, uh, the measures that you're already taking, you're already going, uh, well beyond what, what most, uh, uh, folks are doing at this point, so definitely gotta commend you in that area, do you, do you think you're gonna be able to keep up that same level of, um, precautions with, uh, with a larger influx of people coming into the, into the building?
I absolutely do, another thing that I didn't even mention, something that we do all the time, is whenever they turn in the shoes, we disinfect and spray the shoes, right now, we have the protocol, whenever the open bowlers get finished bowling, we tell them, leave the balls on the rack, we go down and clean them off and sanitize them and put them back on the rack.
Okay.
So for any contact points, we're cleaning off the counters, we're actually even, they have touchscreens where they put in their names, we clean off the touchscreens, we're on it, okay?
That's, that, that's phenomenal, I, I really have to commend you on that, you're, you've, you've gone far and beyond what it is that's already been requested, so I, I, I personally think this is, um, it, it's, it's, it's not a stretch, uh, some of the issues that I've seen in some of the other requests is that, um, there are no ideas about any type of precautions that, that can be taken or will be taken, and, and you've already prepared that, you've already done that, so, uh, I, I really commend you for what you've done, that's all the questions I have, thank you.
Okay.
So if we were to amend the declaration tonight, what would your actual date be to start the first league bowl?
Well, we would start as soon as possible, um, the biggest league to bowl is on Wednesday night, and they have eight weeks, so we would try to get them started Wednesday, if we can get ahold of them in time.
Tomorrow night?
If, if, yeah, if not, uh, it would be, uh, probably starting the week of, uh, on next Sunday, we have a league to bowl on Sunday, and then they bowl Sunday through Friday.
You know, that.
If I could get next week started, that'd be great.
But, you know, you've got the lib day weekend, which is so, but you could, so you get to do what you wanna do in the event that we request an amendment, in the event that the amendment is passed, and then, uh, you know, you would be able to do whatever you wanted, but I mean.
Under normal circumstances, and it would be the same here, no league bowls on holiday, because everybody's out of town, half the people wouldn't be there.
A week from tomorrow would likely be the earliest you could start, and that would give you plenty of time to contact your.
Uh, we could probably start, uh, the day after Memorial Day, Tuesday.
Thank you. Is that how quickly it would go into effect, Carol?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. You've made a great, you've made a great presentation, Jim, thank you for taking the time to come here, and, uh, when that comes on the agenda tonight, uh, we'll just see what happens, we have to make the, pass the declaration, if we do that, and then we would amend that to, you know, allow, so we just, you know, you've made a, a good plea, so thank you for taking the time to come here.
Well, uh, thank you for taking the time to listen to me, it's nice to meet you all, first time I've been in here.
Jim, I have one final question, how many, how many teams do you have on your leagues?
Oh.
First I ask, 'cause I believe you have forty lanes?
We, we have forty lanes, it varies, there's, small is six, all the way up to the, the big one I was talking to, the, uh, Coors League.
Yeah.
Coors League has twenty teams, so that would take up all the lanes with every other lane.
Okay. We don't have any twenty-five team?
No.
Okay.
Actually, last year, the Coors League was, was thirty, which was the best we've ever had, ever, but that always didn't last.
Just one quick question, if you have an increase of people coming in, will you have to extend your hours to be able to, um, make sure everyone's able to bowl?
Uh, I don't think we'd be extending our hours any, they, they normally bowl, you'd have four people on, let's say, lane nine, and four people on lane ten, and they bowl across those two lanes, so according to the new rules, the four people can bowl on lane nine, but nobody would bowl on ten, that's your social distancing, which is six feet, and then someone's gonna bowl on eleven, so it's gonna be the same time.
Yeah.
Same timeframe. Uh, with just the open bowling, we've been closing nine thirty or ten, and it would be the same closing time with the people coming in to bowl.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much for your input.
Thank you.
All right, um, let's see, any other items on the, uh, regular session that anybody wants to bring up? Okay, seeing none, uh, item number three, study items, item number three point one, discuss draft accessory building ordinance?
Yeah, I'll jump out there, I think, and, and, and start this out, this is a discussion that, uh, has been delayed for various reasons, that we've tried to have for a couple times now, and, and since, uh, it became a, a big issue, uh, at the last, what, the town hall we had in February, almost three weeks ago, and so, in that time, we have crafted two different versions of possible ordinances that allow for diff, that have differences and allow maybe for more, so I, I know we have, uh, Chris Bauer and Ken Bradley here to present those tonight.
Okay.
And, um, and then you may like them, or you may wanna change them to something else, but anyway, it gives you some options to consider, and so with that, I, I think, um...
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Gerald, it's been a long time coming to talk to you guys. Four meetings now? Um, wow.
Give me a second.
So a lot of the numbers I'm gonna bring before we deny it are numbers that I've looked at, I've studied Newcastle Moore, Stillwater, Edmund, Broken Arrow, Lawton, a lot of those towns do what's called a coverage area, then instead of a lot minimum, lot maximum, what a lot of those towns do is a twenty percent coverage area though, which, if you take our standard lot, only gives you about four hundred square feet in a quarter acre backyard. Thank you, Carol. So my numbers are larger than theirs, but the reason why we regulate storage building, a lot of it is stormwater and runoff, a lot of our older additions have those additions calculated on older, older calculations for stormwater, runoff, different things like that, not adversely affect the neighboring properties. If you get too big, the water runs off, it washes out your neighbor's property, then we have a whole lengthy issue of things that are going on with runoff and stormwater. The other reason we take it is, if it is unchecked, it damages our streets, it damages our stormwater that we have, it overflows it, we have flooding in our streets and possibly in our neighborhoods, so we have to be careful about how large we go at the same time of wanting to be able to help these people have the size of what they want, because we want that, we want them to be able to have what they're wanting. Some other things we're looking at on it is, we have a couple cleanup issues in the ordinance that, uh, we had some issues with, I mean, Gerald looked over several different times with some proposals here, right now, you can't even use an accessory building on a vacant lot if it's been sitting there for thirty years, well, we want you to be able to use that building for what it was intended for, for storage and stuff like that, even if you own the property next to it, you still cannot unless you combine it, the draft of the new ordinance cleans that up, it also cleans up that, uh, you can't exceed the square footage of your lot, so if you have an accessory building that is twelve hundred square feet, but you have an eight hundred square foot house, you can only have eight hundred square foot of sort of accessory building, part of the ordinance as it reads right now, so your houses also dictate your max size on top of your ordinance, that would clean up both parts of that. Oh, thank you. So what I've got here, as before, our standard lot size, Nielsen, um, where I live at in Nielsen addition over there, my backyard is twenty-six hundred square feet, which is roughly what a quarter acre lot has in a backyard, at twenty percent, I'm only allowed roughly six hundred square feet, what the current ordinance reads, went too far, Dana, with the proposal, we get it up to thirty percent coverage area at eight hundred square feet, it gives an extra hundred fifty square feet, it's covering thirty percent of the backyard, it's not gonna adversely affect the neighbors to run off the fences, I've looked over these numbers with engineering as well, they like these numbers, they, they do not see any adverse effect from the neighbors' properties. You go up to the next one, which is a quarter to a half, and you've got, from seven twenty, we move up to a thousand, which is what the cap is in most towns on anything under a half acre, Oklahoma City, Lawton, those that have the coverage area, they also have a max cap of a thousand square feet, so this gets us kind of in there, if you have a, one of our larger half acre lots here in town, that's about nice, the other side of that is, if you're at point three acres versus point two five, you cross that quarter acre to the half acre range, and you've only gained a little bit of a backyard, so we've gotta think about those smaller lots that are still somewhat larger at the same time. You get into your lots, one half acre and greater, but less than an acre, we increase it from eight hundred to twelve hundred square feet, that's a pretty good sized shop, I mean, a thirty by forty is a lot more than most people have right now, they're, they're even gonna want, I like a thirty by forty myself. The next one we'd have is from an acre and greater to two acres, right now, if you have a little bit of farmland, it's not a full farmland, you're at twelve hundred square feet, is all you're allowed, this would give some of those farmers that have the small farms on the R one are, you know, small ag lots, two thousand square feet of farm that they could use, or farmland building they could use. Same thing with lots, uh, two to five, we increase it from two thousand square feet to a three and a half percent coverage area, 'cause this ordinance covers a lot of our ag properties too, so we want to be able to have, if you've got a agriculture operation, you can cover that with this as well, gives you a pretty good sized storage building on those size lots, same thing with, uh, anything five acres and greater, you give them five percent of the total area, that does not adversely affect any of the stormwater, if you get into anything with creeks or anything like that, you're still gonna have to do stormwater detention, drainage, anything like that, but it does give you that ability to have a larger building, and which is what a lot of people are wanting now, is a larger building. Questions?
Yes, uh, one question for you, Ken, is specifically in the case that we heard, um, from Mr. Mongold, would this fix that issue?
It would not.
Okay.
It would not, it would move him though, where he could be a little bit larger than what he has now, if he combined his lots, but that would put him at roughly a thousand square feet versus seven hundred and twenty, which is all he's allowed now.
Just to refresh the commission, I think he was building a sixteen hundred square feet building, and his current lot size, I think, is less than a quarter acre?
Yes.
So currently, he's only allowed, is it seven twenty or six fifty?
Six fifty.
Six fifty.
If he combines his lots, he would be allowed seven twenty, under the current ordinance.
So for this proposal from you, how much?
It would be a thousand.
Oh, I just wanna be clear about that, because that's one particular tough problem.
Did we reach out to him, did he know we were discussing this?
No, because, uh, tonight was an effort to talk about a craft and ordinance, or intends to have a public hearing after this, where we would invite Mr. Mongold to comment. That's.
You mean in a different day?
Yes, on a different day.
Okay.
Yes, because nothing, this is all discussion here, uh, and I did certainly think about contacting him, but I thought that we had, I'm not sure we would hear anything different than we did at the town hall.
I agree, I just, we told him that we were going to have discussions about it, and he would be invited, so I, I just wanna make sure that, uh, this isn't the end.
It is not the end, I'll be glad to contact him and tell him that we've talked about it, we're gonna talk about it some more, and when we have the hearing, I'm gonna invite him in, comment on whatever the proposal is at that time.
Correct. And, and that lot would be one of those examples that would be roughly point three acres at that point, and move into the higher category, but still not have much more of a backyard than what he would have at a quarter of an acre.
Okay.
I, I'd like to make a comment on it, because I'm very aware of what's been going on, I'm in favor of an increased size of a building, even, well, one thing I, I, I realize the, uh, water damage that can be caused, you know, erosion, whatever, but then the flip side of that, um, if you look at air pollution, it might be able to reduce some of that, because you don't have so much grass that you would have to cut, you know, with lawn mowers and all those different type of things, and, you know, as people get older, I'm getting older, um, cutting the yard is a little bit tougher than it used to be twenty years ago, so, and, uh, also, I, 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 I thought about it, um, being a young man and, um, looking back at times that me and my father spent together, you know, it'd have been really nice if we had a shop, to be able to, um, build some cars in and different things like that, but where we lived, uh, we weren't able to have that, so if we can make, you know, those type of, um, changes, um, it can build relationships as well, you know, in, as far as family, and, you know, running a business, um, with my equipment, it would help protect my equipment, um, from the elements, and also it would help protect my equipment, um, from theft or, or vandalism, so it's very important to me that we, um, consider to. So it's very important to me that we consider to make the change to increase the size of these buildings. So there are some positives to it as well.
I think we also have to consider the other neighbors in the neighborhood as well. And if you're making one happy and 25 neighbors angry because you're almost turning a residential lot into an industrial lot, then you're not doing anybody any favors there. But I do see your point. And I think, I think it's time to upgrade the ordinance. I'm not sure that we can get as far as this person would like it to go, but, but I agree.
Well, we do have the other version from Chris Bauer that's a little bit different on sizing. So Ken will stay here, if you have questions for him later, Chris will go over his version and you can ask questions about both of them and we'll start trying to figure out what you might want to see.
Thank you, Mayor, Board of Commissioners, City Manager. Why Dana is bringing up my presentation, thank you Dana. I have four topics that I'll discuss in my presentation. Stormwater, standard building sizes, variances, and how big is the problem is this? Stormwater in existing neighborhoods, the stormwater ordinance requires accessory buildings greater than 650 square feet pay a stormwater fee. And that mitigates their impact on the stormwater system. Not only does that mitigate for the accessory building, it also mitigates for the house that never was assessed for the stormwater. So that's my comments on stormwater.
So, hey, Chris, let me ask right there, give me an idea of what that fee would be. Let's say someone comes in, they want to put a thousand square foot building. What would the stormwater fee be since it was above the 650? Is that?
It's going to be roughly a little over $800 and that grows by a percentage every year to take care of inflation. So I know that it's-
Pay that every year or they, that's a one time when they get the permit?
It's one time for the permit.
Okay.
But it's, I'm going to say it's roughly 800 this year. Next year, it'll be maybe 810 or 805. And that number keeps growing over time is what I'm telling you. But it's assessed for the lot, which covers the residence and any accessory buildings that would be built. And it's a one time. So when we approve a new subdivision today, that, for the entire subdivision, if there's 50 lots there or 100, that fee is collected at time of plat. So when the builder comes in to build in there, they don't pay that again. Okay? But that's not very many neighborhoods in Enid. Most of our neighborhoods are older.
Yes, sir.
And occasionally, there'll be a vacant lot in an older neighborhood that somebody will build on. And then at that time, that stormwater is assessed when that permit is pulled. But the overwhelming majority is we have existing homes and people that want to add accessory buildings. If that accessory building is greater than 650 square feet, then the entire lot is assessed at that time of permit, one time.
Okay.
Did I get it?
Thank you.
Answered that good?
Yes, sir.
The next thing is this current went into effect in 2015, it's a little over four years old. In that time, the Board of Adjustment has heard 14 variances, it's approved 13 and denied one. And we'll talk about variances a little bit more in a minute. But I'd like to, is this not working? Can you click me to the next slide, Dana?
Some of them pointed back that direction.
Okay, maybe that'll help.
Oops. Put out Jim's eye.
I did, I'm sorry. Um, if you're going to increase, let's see if it works now. There it is, whoops, I went too far. If you're going, as Ken told you in his presentation, on quarter acre lots and smaller, the current ordinance is 650. And I would like for you to look and consider standard building sizes because when people go into the marketplace, that's typically what they're looking at. You can build a custom building, but standard building sizes are efficient use of materials and you're not cutting off a foot and wasting it. So it's usually in two foot increments. The only one that's standard is a 20 by 30, which is 600, which would comply with the current ordinance. But if you're doing it as a garage, the 20 foot width with a 16 foot door and two foot on each side, it's difficult to get a full size pickup and a full size SUV in there. If you turn at 30, then you have plenty of room for the door inside, on each side, but you don't have depth in front of the vehicles to have orc bench. So it's why people typically will want to go to a 24 by 30, which would be 720. Or if you went all the way to a 30 by 30, would be 900. So if you're considering increasing, I would encourage you to draw that line at some point that makes a standard building size make sense. On the next lots, from a quarter to a half, in your current ordinance, you only increase from 650 to 720. That's only 70 square feet, but you've increased, doubled the size of the lot. I'm suggesting if you do 900 on the smaller lots, then maybe you consider 1,800 or up to that on this size lot. And here are the standard building sizes that would work there. The next part is, I just did a graphic there, the top one, I'll point here. This is the current 650 on a quarter acre sized lot with a typical three bedroom, two bath, two car garage. You can see there's adequate room. If you increase that to 900, it's the same size house, same size lot, there's the physical difference. If you come down to the half acre lots, quarter to a half, here's 720. If you went all the way to 1,800, not saying that you would maybe go that high, but if you did, that's what it physically looks like. And let's just say you're a quarter acre and you're just slightly over into that next one. 1,800, probably you can't even get it on there because you're confined by your property lines. You're confined by the setbacks, so the side yards or rear yards, how far you have to be from the main structure. That's going to start, you know, if I'm just slightly over a quarter, even though the ordinance said I could go to 1,800, I probably can't get it on there. Okay? Then the next thing I looked at was maybe you don't have any size requirements on lots that are greater than a half acre. And those would be in these zoning categories of R2, R3, R4, and et cetera. There are some larger lots that exceed a half acre. And there are people that want larger lots, not necessarily to build excessive accessory buildings on. They typically have a pet that's greater than a cat or a dog. It may be a horse or something of that nature. And, or they just simply like the open space. And we have some people that just enjoy spending their entire Saturday mowing grass. I'm not that guy. Number four, the proposed ordinance would exempt R1 because by zoning, the minimum lot size to be zoned R1 is a half acre or larger. And that's Norman Road in Richland, in, south of here. Or I call those kind of the little ranchette areas, that's what that is zoned in there. And you typically see those people, not all of them have a horse, but maybe, they just like open space. They don't want to be in a typical lot. And then R7, in order to have that, you have to have half acre or larger as well. And I didn't see any reason to regulate five acre lots or two acre lots or that type of thing. And I'll explain that in just a minute because, let's see what my next slide is. These are the variances, I'm sorry that that's a little bit hard to read. Maybe on your tablets, it's a little bit better. But if you can see here, I collectively did the acres. This is being that .8 acre, which is there even, the Board of Adjustment saw fit to approve all of these. This is the only one that they denied. So your Board of Adjustment is looking at these larger lots here and they saw that it met the criteria for variance and they approved it. So that's some evidence that probably don't even need to be that concerned about those. I think you want to be concerned about it on a quarter acre and smaller and quarter to a half. The next slide is, I just thought it was interesting, where are all these variances? And we plotted them for you. It's a citywide issue. It's in every one of your wards. It's in the urban areas as well as the perimeter ones are going to be your larger acreages. And here are going to be your smaller lots. Does that make sense, the urban part? Let's see. So this brings us to the last topic, how big is the problem? We have 17,461 residential lots in Enid. We went over all of Enid, multiple days. Karla almost got mad at me, but she hung in there tough. We found 50 lots in all of Enid that have more than 900 square feet on them. And Enid is 127 years old. This is a clear indicator that people are regulating themselves to the size that they have without an ordinance. And you look at the lots, we also looked at the lots from a quarter to a half and we only found nine that had over 1,800. This is evidence that you could use to increase the ordinance from 650 to 900 on the small lots and from 720 to 1,800 on the quarter to a half. It is also data that you could use if you wanted to repeal the size of accessory buildings in the ordinance. I think this supports that. People are governed, no matter how big their lot is, they still have to comply with the setbacks, side, rear, separation from the main structure, old oak trees, et cetera, will regulate that. So with that, I'm ready to answer any questions.
One question. What about the accessory buildings that are connected to the house or garages? Would that make any difference? It's connected to the-
If it's a part of the main structure, it is not in this calculation. So you could have like, in my little graphic, my three bedroom, two bath house was a two car attached garage. So you could go in the back and do another accessory building in addition to that garage in your backyard. So the house meets the setbacks for the residential category they're in.
Chris, in some of our older neighborhoods, that, when the house was originally built, they built a detached garage. That was still considered part of the main structure even though they weren't connected together like we do them today. So if that were the case, if someone had a detached two car garage and then they wanted to put an outline building, would they still have 900 feet to use?
No. In the current ordinance, regardless of how it was built, and I agree with you, that was the way it was considered. But under the current ordinance, you have the main house and then there's the detached garage. So let's say the square footage under the current ordinance for detached structures is 650 square feet. The existing detached garage there, let's just say it's 400, a Model A garage.
Sure.
That means you could add on to that Model A garage 260 square feet to get to the, 250, I'm sorry, to get to the 650. Did I answer that question? You can't have the Model A and then another 650.
Yeah, another way of answering it is the current ordinance, the limitation is for all accessory buildings, which a detached garage would be. So either you'd add on to that one or if you had another one, if that's even possible.
Gerald makes a great point. It can be in one building or it can be in 10 little buildings as long as they don't exceed 650. That's a great point, Gerald, thank you.
That's also what Chris and Ken are also saying, this is, we're trying to give you options and information because you can change any of this to what you want it to be. So a question for this, how would this impact Mr. Mongold and his situation? Would this solve the problem there?
Can you bring back my presentation or did I do that, Dana? I'm going to go back to the Board of Adjustment, variances, to answer your question. Thank you, Dana. I don't know why. There it is. The one that Gerald's talking about is this one right here at 819 West Elm. This is Mr. Mongold. And these were the first ones and we just went up the list. So this happened to be the last one the Board of Adjustment reviewed. He had, he requested, he wants to build 1,600 square feet. The lot that he came in, as you can see, was .6, .16. So he would be under a quarter acre. And the proposal that I'm saying is if you use a standard building size, 30 by 30, that would allow 900. So it wouldn't cover that. But in his case, he owns two lots. And his goal is to combine the lots, tear down both houses, build a new house and a 1,600 foot accessory building. If you add another lot to this, then you have .2, 32, thank you. My math is a little struggling there. Now you've crossed over into that quarter to a half. My suggestion is to you, if you do nine on the smaller lots and you double that lot to a half, that gets it to 1,800, he would comply if you did that.
And Chris, I had talked to him. I've even seen his blueprints and his drawings of his new home that he's getting ready to build. And he's going to attach, his plan is to attach his home to the accessory building. And his biggest thing was he needed a place to be able to store him and his wife's personal belongings without going into debt behind storages and all these different types of things. By being able to put them into that building, that would allow them to be able to save some money while they were building this home. In fact, they're going to have to rent a house while they're building a brand new home. So that was his biggest reason for wanting to building this size. In that way, once the home was built, he was going to attach the house to the existing accessory building that he wants to put up. I know he's done it backwards and I get that, you know, but that was his reasoning for doing it the way that he's doing it. Affordability, to be able to afford.
So to answer Gerald's question, does this proposal address that? It depends where the council chooses to draw that line on those quarter to a half acre. I've suggested 1,800, you may not want to go that high. You may want to go higher, I don't know. I would just encourage you to think in terms of standard building sizes when you draw that line. Any other questions?
And like you said, Chris, I, in the future, I'm going to build me a shop myself. You're absolutely correct. When you start looking at the dimensions of the metal buildings or the buildings and structures of today, those even numbers are a whole lot easier for those engineers to produce. When you start getting into the numbers that are 26 by 28 or, you know, 32 by 22, it's very costly.
It's not efficient use of materials, that's why it's costly.
Exactly, there's a lot of waste.
Your waste.
A lot of wasted material.
There you are.
So the even number buildings are a whole lot better. It saves the customer money and in the industry. I mean, we don't lose a lot of material to the landfill.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Probably, probably it sounds like our next step is to try and figure out a version of the ordinance to bring to you at some point with the hearing and have you vote on it, which if you didn't like what it was, you could always change it at that time.
You know, I think one of the most germane things that Chris said was that it appears that the citizenry are taking care of this themselves. So moving up to the higher size, as Chris suggested, it doesn't seem to be a real downsized to that. Solves Mr. Mongold's issue. So that's what I think would make sense to do.
I'm a little confused by the idea that we have a regulation in place and we're saying that the citizenry is regulating themselves, but that's objectively not true. We have a regulation in place. Now, maybe we want to let the citizenry regulate themselves, but it's, but Chris, those aren't the same things. I mean, what's happened is we've had limitations on accessory buildings for a long time. Consequently, we haven't had big accessory buildings built. I don't think it's fair to say that the two are unrelated. I mean, that's the point of the regulation to start out with.
Commissioner, you make a great point. Out of the 127 year history of Enid, we've probably been regulating accessory buildings maybe 25 years. So for, there's a hundred year period where they're probably, people were probably building their main dwelling for, to live in and accessory buildings probably weren't that important to them in the very beginning of Enid's history. But we have a longstanding history. We just simply looked and seen how many of this size exceeded 900 and we, I was quite surprised how small the number was. Now, if we look, go ahead.
I think there's, it makes sense to expand the size. I just want to, I don't want to go so far that we've got a neighbor on a, you know, three quarter acre lot who has a 1,500 square foot Quonset hut next to him. I can understand how that would, would change the character of the neighborhood in a way that I would really hate for that neighbor to come to us and say, it's, it's, you know, I have to look at this whole thing now and all- I have to look at this whole thing now and all we could say is, well, they met the setback requirement, sorry. I'm not sure that we want to go quite that far.
I understand. That's why I just kind of set some parameters. You and the rest of commissioners will decide where you want that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey Chris. There would be no guideline though as far as, because Ben makes a good point on the style of that building. I mean, if they lived in the neighborhood that was in all brick homes and someone wanted to build a Quonset hut up, I mean, I could see where that would be an issue with the neighbors. Do we?
They can do that. Their only requirement right now is that the construction meet our building code. The zoning ordinance does not say. I, I do believe the current ordinance does require the same building materials, but I don't see that happening. You don't see brick accessory buildings happening behind brick homes. It's, it's, using myself as a case, I have a little eight by 12, I think 90 square, 9600, 96 square feet. I need a bit more help on math, Scott. And it's just simply there to house the lawn mower and all that necessary stuff you have to do to take care of your lawn. I mean, I would never do a 650 or a 900 square foot in my backyard, but it's a little plastic building that I bought from Lowe's. But it, my house is brick and it doesn't meet that, but it's tucked back in there in the trees and fences around it, nobody, it's small. But to answer your question, if somebody wanted to do a 30 by 30 Quonset hut metal building, the ordinance would not prevent that.
It was tall enough for a motorhome to back in. I mean.
We see those now in Enid already.
Some of the, some of the housing developments have covenants that would, would.
Right.
And plus.
I can't remember, but I know that, I know that the legislature at least attempted to restrict cities from imposing architectural.
Guidelines.
Guidelines. And I can't, frankly, I can't remember whether it passed or not. I think that it passed. Most of the subdivisions would be governed by their covenants though. But I can, I can double check that. But, but his ordinance removes it. Removes the, the architectural similarities that needs to be just like the.
Which is just a proposal. I'm not here to say you, I, I have figured out your ordinance. I'm just giving you some ideas.
Yeah, I don't want to rely too much on restrictive covenants for all this. I mean, there's not a single restrictive covenant in my side of town. I don't think there are any in Ward 3 because all the neighborhoods predate the era of, of restrictive covenants. And, and I don't want to, just by virtue of when a housing development was built, effectively dictate whether your neighbor can, you know, build a, a big shiny Quonset hut or not. I think we need to be thinking about rules that apply for the community as a whole, not just deferring to those restrictive covenants on, on, on any rules. I'm not saying we shouldn't do something, I'm not saying we shouldn't allow it, but I, I don't think the, just strike the whole restriction is, is probably the way to go.
All right. Okay. Good, thank you. Good discussion. Okay, item number 3.2, update on skate park. Coming back, huh?
Not left. Thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
My presentation's coming up here. Here we go. We started on the skate park about four weeks ago tomorrow. And in that timeframe, prior to my involvement, the engineering department did a request for a proposal to three skate park designers and two local engineers. One was in Biotech and one was from Scott Holson Engineering. We got responses back from two skate park designers. And of those two, I interviewed them and learned in, it'll show up here, that one of them is in Sourcewell. And when we discovered that, which means the competitive bidding part and components of the skate park have already been vetted and complies with Oklahoma state law, and management made that decision to go that way. This is my presentation. This is the lot outlined in yellow. It is between Broadway and Randolph and Fifth Street on the east side. You're going to see some preliminary concept drawings basically in this area. And we are currently getting a survey of the property. I should have it tomorrow. Porterfield is our surveyor. The next slide is Corey Buller, our Parks and Recreation Supervisor, reached out to the skate community and they came up with this list of elements that they would like to see in the park. And they also provided a sketch. This was accompanied with the RFI that engineering sent out. Spawn Ranch is the one that's in Sourcewell, which means we can contract with them because competitively bid has already happened. It'll be two parts. Gerald is ready to sign a design contract in the amount of $15,000. That will get us to 100% design development by June 30th. And from after that, then we'll have a contract that we will pay the unit prices that have been prebid under Sourcewell for the elements that are in the park. This is Stillwater, Oklahoma. This was done in 2014 by the same people that we're going to hire to do our park and they used the Sourcewell contract as well for their park. Then this is the first sketch, if you, this part here, this is Fifth Street, this is that area, this is a design option one, and there's just several views of the same thing. We're going to go around it. And that's, that price tag of what you saw there comes in at $260,000. The next one is concept option two, a little bit bigger, still fits in the site, all the different views. It comes in at 285. They gave, this all came in that request for information. This is option number three. Again, it's a little bit bigger, but fits within our site, has more elements. That's what that looks like. And the price tag on this one is 330. I do, if you read all of the fine print.
Chris, we're, we're adjusting the presentation screen.
Okay.
Do you mind going back to your presentation?
Did I go too fast?
And start with the pictures for phase one as soon as Dana gets it pulled up?
This doesn't have very, like these?
We were seeing it in here, but people on Zoom were not seeing.
Did I go too fast? Okay. Sorry. Here is option one. Is that showing up on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay. So the next few slides are the same option, just from different perspectives. We're just going to kind of go around. Can you advance it for me Dana?
Right.
Okay. There we go. So that's the same option one, just a different view, another view. And while we're here, I want to point out something. You see the seating area and cover? That is not in those prices. It's not in any of those three options. I just want you to know that. And it's in the fine print and I was getting ready to show that for you. Here's another view of option one. We still good on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then there's the, looking down, the planned view of option one. The next slide will, well, this is the details. This is the price tag for that one, 260. And if you read, you've really, you'll see that some elements are not in there. Option two.
Chris, you might also show them at some point, the offsite improvements aren't included in those numbers.
I will. Okay. This is option two and it is bigger. And the next series of slides, just different views. And then there's the price tag. Is that coming through on Zoom? Okay. Thank you, sir. And then this is option three. And I want to address Gerald's question, and I think this is a good view to do it. When we use Sourcewell, they have prebid just the skate park elements. So what that means, it's only good for the onsite improvements of the skate park. All of the offsite improvements, sidewalks, parking, streets repairs, that is not in the contract and that would have to be a separate design and bid like you normally do, solicitation for bids for all of your projects. So that would be an engineering design project. Then you'd go through the 21 day solicitation for bid, you'd open bids, and then you would select the lowest and best bidder to make those improvements. So I'm glad Gerald lifted that up. The nice new parking that you see in this picture is just a rendering. I've assessed the parking. It's not the best, but I think you would be okay if your budget doesn't allow you to address those offsite issues. You actually have parking there now. It's just a little bit cracked. There needs to be proper striping for the parking spaces. There need to be, needs to be a proper ADA. I did not assess the slopes that are there, but let's assume that it doesn't comply. We have done this around town. We just salt cut that out and we put in a concrete that's appropriate size at the right pitches and accommodates that. What Sourcewell would be, or Spawn would be doing per Sourcewell, and maybe I can, I can't back this up. Well, you see this little sidewalk right here? See this would be the property line, this edge? They're doing that ADA accessible route from the existing, thank you Dana, from the existing sidewalk, they'll be responsible to make that connection actually to the park. Does that make sense? So let's see what's next. This one was 330. Oops. This is an important slide. As I indicated, Gerald is ready on behalf of the city of Enid at a $15,000 design fee and I need you to know that in that 15,000, there's $3,000 for geotechnical work. And what that means is we're going to go out, the design engineer will tell his geotech engineer, I need borings here, here and here. And they'll get soil samples and then that'll tell them how to structurally build the park. And that is a part of the 15,000. So it's 15, it's really, you're getting your design for 12 is what I'm saying. The kickoff meeting, Carol has reviewed the contract, we're ready to sign it. We'll, that'll probably happen later this evening or first thing tomorrow. I'll send that back out to Spawn Ranch, we'll have that done. But our kickoff meeting is tomorrow morning at 10 a.m. in this room and it's also by Zoom. And we have sent those notices out. We will look at a 75% design development on June 10th. On June 30th, we will have the 100% design development. It's my desire then to bring that forth to you on your July 7th meeting for your ultimate approval as a city commission. Once that approve, is approved, then they will work through the construction documents by August 21st and you will have a finished skate park right before Thanksgiving on November 20th. That is Spawn's estimated timeline. Any questions?
No, go ahead. Didn't you say there's three different options?
In the RFI, engineering asked for a request for information and they gave us the three I showed you.
Has one been selected?
No. No, that, that, those are just.
How's that just going to do that?
Well, we have put together a design development committee that consists of Commissioner Allen and Commissioner Zell and the local skaters, as well as we're inviting the park board to participate as well.
Perfect.
And so they're going to work through that. And I'm glad you asked that question because I want to talk a little bit about Sourcewell and how good that is for us. They, their prices have been pre, have been a bid, have been bid competitively and approved on unit prices and that means something to Rob and probably most of you. So for example, in, in some of these elements, let me just go back here to a picture. Yeah, I'll just, I'm just going to pick, you know, this, this round edge here. There, that is so many feet and the unit price is so much per foot. So as the design development community is working with the designer, there's going to be, the cost will, will just be there and it won't change because that is what was prebid under Sourcewell. So when we bring you a final 100% design, there will be a price there and you'll know exactly what that is. And hopefully we come back to you on July 7th for you to execute the necessary contract for us to go ahead and engage them to do the construction documents and ultimately the construction. Did, did that make sense? I'm new to the Sourcewell, but I, I think that is a really nice thing. The designer, the, the option three, he said he just did in Nebraska, but he wants to do something different. So to get back to your question, these are just ideas. You should glean from this their capabilities and the quality of product that you're going to get. But your skate park will be specific to our site, to the needs of our local skaters and to our budget.
What's the, what's the number of local skaters? Is there 1,000 or 10,000 or?
I know Corey would have a better answer, but when I was talking to Corey, he identified 12 skaters that are pretty active. And these are not high school that he's talking about. These are young people. And so when I first started setting up the meeting, I was a little surprised. I assumed they had jobs. And the answer came back, we can meet at 10 o'clock in the morning. So the rest of it's just to adjust their schedule. So their jobs may be later in the day. I, I don't know that much about them, but they certainly are engaged, they're excited about this project, they've put forth their wish list. Spawn was made aware of that wish list and the sketch. And they're, these are stock plans that they just dropped on the RFI. They're going to, tomorrow, there'll be a visioning session with Commissioner Zell, Commissioner Allen, the skaters and Corey Buller. And then they'll go away and I look for them to bring back specific solutions with different dollar signs at our 75% to see if he, if the designer has captured the vision of the design development committee.
Maybe I misunderstood you. Did, did you just tell me there's just 12 people in Enid that do this?
Well, he identified 12.
That's wrong. That's a wildly wrong number.
Okay. Yeah, what's the number?
It's in my house alone. There's, there's no way 12 is the number.
Yeah, my, my daughter skateboards too. There's, there's, there's several. There's, there's lots of people around this community that skateboard.
At, at least 30, come on.
Okay. I gave you the best, the information that I had.
I feel better.
No, yeah, the number of users.
Can I interject on that, Chris? You're backing yourself in your corner. If I could help you a little bit.
I'll be quiet.
So you see this plan that's up here? You've had three different options. The thing is about a skate park, it's, that's a misnomer. It's a, it's a park. And we have the skaters, the professional level skaters, you know, the guys that do it all the time, that's that 12. And they, they gave us their ideas of what they wanted. But, and that first, you have a list of the three of them, you can see the pictures. It's, it's kind of made for skaters. The deal is, is in Enid, we have bicycles and we're talking about not just road bikes, but the, the trick bikes. And then you have scooters and then you have roller skates, you have inline skates. And so that's what we're trying to do here. When you look at it that way, you have hundreds and hundreds. All kids have something that they ride on. You have grandchildren or children that are on some kind of wheels. And so that's what we're looking at for the skate parks. So it'll be called a skate park.
And they would all have accessibility.
And they would all have access equally. When I left here the other day after the Tuesday night meeting, on our skate park were two bicycles. And it's those little trick bicycles that they sail through the air. So the key to this, this park is that it covers all the different types of wheeled items that you can self propel. And that's what's very important. You can't really tell too much from that design up there, but it's, it goes up in the air. So you have some bowls in there. And the Stillwater skate has a pump track and there's all different kinds of elements that are available out there. Of course, we're limited by the space and by the amount of money we have to spend, but we're not limited by what can take place there. And that's the most important thing that we can do for the, for the population because you'll have kids from, when they can first get on the, you know, kids ride scooters at two and three years old, I guess, and then all the way up to these Generation Z that are on, you know, out. And then all the way up to these Generation Z that are on, you know, out here playing on all of our elements across the street. I hope that helps.
You've convinced me.
I hope that helps, because I didn't, when you said 12 people, I was like, oh my gosh, we got lots of wheeled items.
Is this a sport you participate in?
No, I designed the one across the street. And so it's very important, you know, my big deal is parks. And, and these parks like this serve the most underserved people in, in town. Typically, skaters and, and folks of that ilk are not, that's their sport. So it's just as important to them as, as a ball sports, baseball, soccer, football, you know, all those, all those things. These are the kids that fall through the tracks, or through the cracks. And they, they are independent, and they like doing their own thing. And this gives them that freedom and gives them lots of different options. So that's, it's a real underserved part of the community. This is what this park is going to be.
I have two questions.
Yes, sir.
Question number one, as far as lighting. I don't see any lighting up there. Is there going to be any lighting?
I asked that question, and I was told not at this time. Our current skate park does not have lighting either. So this will be functional during daylight hours.
My last question is, is to, Rob kind of hit on it. It was to Commissioner Zell, which one did you like the best out of the three?
Number three. I like the bigger, wider space with that kind of curves at both ends. I think it has a lot more to offer. And I think part of what, I think Jerry really hit on correctly, that this is a park that will get used by folks on all kinds of different things. And having that little more space, so if you've got, you know, one of my kiddos on a skateboard on one end, and you have somebody on a BMX bike, there's room for both of them to coexist there at the same time. I also think what you will find is that the community of folks that will use a skate park are really pretty friendly, that there's a lot of culturally, a lot of desire to teach and to, you know, show kids and to work together. But you also, whenever you're showing kids something new, you just got to have room. And I think we will benefit from having that appears to be kind of a bigger layout. So there's, there's room for people to work, work on, on different things in different areas without being all over each other.
We, we didn't put lights on the one back here because we didn't want anybody there at night. So, you know, this, that's, it's more residential back there as well. So we'll, you know, we'll just have to see. There is on one of these versions, there's a street lamp there. But at this point, I'm not going to be concerned about that. I just want to get it up and running. And I'll tell you who else wants to get it up? The police department, because they can't get started until we shut that down. So we're, we're putting a timeline across the board, and I think Gerald will be able to answer this, but I think everything's working out pretty well, hand in hand so far, isn't it?
Yes, I think if we can stay on track, this is light speed for the city, as most of you know. And just on the lighting, our good friends at O G and E might want to help with that too, just a thought.
Yeah, because it's going to be a little bit tempting, because you have lighting on Broadway, and you have some on Randolph, and you have a few street lights on Fifth Street. I mean, it's going to be a little tempting there, so we might as well go ahead and put the lights up so the kids can have fun at night.
And we have restroom facilities at Don Haskins', and it's lit.
Most of our parks don't close down until, what, 10:00 p.m.? Or is it 9:00 p.m. or 10:00?
I think it's dusk, 30 minutes after dusk or something like that.
Okay.
Chris, I've got two questions, real quick. Number one, so I'm perfectly clear on this. On the elements that we're purchasing and the company that's going to install all that, that will be a turnkey project, all the additional flat work in between, with the exception of parking and anything off-site. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So if they come back at the 320, it will be 320?
That is correct.
Okay. Then you said we're going to pick a plan based on our budget. Can you explain that budget to me exactly? I know, isn't the PD going to kick in 100K for the property back here?
The budget that's been given to me by Gerald is $300,000. And I think that's what's going to be in your budget for next year that you talk about later in next, the next meeting. But there, if, if, if the design team comes up, let's just say with a, because I purposely asked Spawn Ranch, I said, if, if we added 50,000, could you do something while we? Spectacular. And, and the answer came back, absolutely. So I, I want the design development committee to look at something slightly bigger than 300,000. And if it carries their support, then maybe there's the opportunity to find the additional 50,000. That would be your decision. Does that make sense? And there may be somebody within the community that simply wants to donate to this cause as well. So I'm encouraging, at least at this beginning phase, and the design is to think a little bit bigger, so we make sure we uncover every possible opportunity. We can always back right into the 300,000. And you can see, that's easily deliverable to you. This one, option three, is 320. Just a little bit more than our budget. But I, I salute you for picking the site you did. Have you been by there? I'm sure you have. It's, it's not pretty. You're going to make such a dramatic change in this part of Enid that desperately needs it. This will be something that Marcy Jarrett will put on her visit Enid, like she does with Leonardo's. Because we're not only building a skate park for our children, we're building them for Garfield County kids, we're building it for the regional kids. There will be people that will drive, if we do something pretty spectacular, there will be people that will drive to participate on our park. There's no question in my, I'm not a skater, but I'm, but I'm just.
I look forward to that vision of all of you with your helmets on out there. That'll make a great video.
Bring my skates.
What I didn't know, and maybe you did, is in this process, skate, skateboarding has now become an Olympic event. And it was, the first year was going to be in Tokyo, but it's been postponed because of COVID. So now that it's reached that level, communities across America and across the world will start building more and more of these kind of parks. So you're, you're at the cutting edge. Well done.
Curling is also a, an Olympic event, but just saying.
Thank you for your interest.
All right, thank you. I do not want to, I know we're running at 6:15, but I want to get this next one, because he has been back three or four times, and I don't want to have to call him back again. So item.
Hey, Shane. Hey, you got a radio on, you can sit right now if you'd like. I got the link and doing a screenshot.
Pardon me?
That was some, some chatter off of Zoom.
Oh, okay. All right. Item number 3.3, discuss revives, golf rate ordinance.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you fitting me in.
Can we get the ordinance pulled up, please, Dana?
The main reason we're coming to you, there's a few changes. Some things are going up a little bit. That thing's going up very much. Our current rates do not include tax. So four years ago, we had a individual come in, and he recommended we add tax. So when you take a look, it's not up there yet, but on the left side, it looks clean. Then you add the tax in, and we're dealing with pennies all the time. So somebody comes and asks our staff, what's this rate, what's this rate? It's tough to be able to recall exactly what everything is. So green fee in a cart on weekdays, $39.39. On a weekend, it's 43.64. We would like to add the taxes into our ordinance the way that they were, where it comes on even numbers. There are a few things that we've kind of looked at, since we're going to look at it. I want to, I don't want to come back in one or two years and look at it again. Couple of things I want to point out. The twilight rate went up $2.45. For some reason, that was less than nine-hole rate. We wanted to make that even. We have a lot of different rates. We want to kind of make it more simple. Our, I believe our ordinance is five pages long. We wanted to kind of simplify a few things. We, instead of having a different rate for every couple, so you have your corporate couple, senior couple, city employee couple, senior couple. We just wanted to make it to where you add a spouse to any membership with a green fee for one price, the same price across the board. Add a spouse with a cart, same price across the board, make it more simple. The city employee rate, you can see that goes down considerably. A little over a year ago, I worked with Gerald, worked with the other city employees. We had dropped that down, so it's actually already, right now, it's 400-plus tax. We just didn't come to you for just one change. That's there for wellness for the city employees. They don't get a discount on their cart fee, just the green fee portion. So that encourages them to get out and walk, get out and play golf, physical wellness, mental wellness as well. The senior rates go up a little bit on your membership, which is 8%, I believe, with a green fee in a cart. The seniors also utilize the course more than anybody else. They're retired, they're out there playing. Most of them play, I mean, a lot of our members that are seniors play 200-plus rounds a year. And four years ago, we didn't have a cart option with a annual membership. So they were paying a cart fee of 12.82 every time they came out and played. Now, if you look at that, their round, their rate per round is diluted down to below $10. So they get a very good benefit. Are there any questions? I had attached the apples-to-apples comparison, which shows the with tax and without tax, what we propose.
I think we've seen the exhibits the previous times you were.
Yes.
So I'm pretty sure everybody already seen those. So does anybody have any questions on those? I agree with the, with the idea, being a golfer myself, nothing's more frustrating than, okay, now I got, you show up at the golf course, and next thing you know, you got a whole pocket full of change, and really don't want that. If it's 25 bucks, make it 25 bucks. I don't want to have four pennies.
You just want one.
Six times, a quarter, and a nickel.
You just want one, correct, for a ball marker, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
All righty.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Gerald, you think this next one's going to be quick?
I think it's very brief. Do you think you can get through it, Scott?
I think you give me two minutes, we're done.
All right. Item number 3.4, discuss solid weight provisions, waste revisions.
So this, this proposal is simply just a change for billing, essentially. It is, we have some smart ordinances that are out there that say, hey, if you've got a water meter, we want you to have a trash can. We don't want you to pay for, we don't want you to live in your house and not have trash in the city of Enid limits. We don't want you to pile up trash or take your trash and illegally dump it somewhere else. So we have an ordinance that states that if you have a water meter and you're paying water, you need a little dumpster. At the same time, we have an ordinance that says that if, at your house, you can't have a commercial dumpster. You don't, we don't want your streets to have two-yard dumpsters and, and commercial trucks at 2:00 a.m., ever, all your neighbors hearing the backups, you know, signal to go dump your neighbor's trash. But we do have just a couple of scenarios where we have small duplex or quadplex areas that they each have their individual meter, but it does not work to have a poly cart. And there is a landlord that does want to pay for a dumpster. And we need the, the flexibility to accommodate a few of those situations. Some of them may be a quadplex where there's a second floor, and they're, they're not going to drag their poly cart up to their second floor. And then if they leave it on the ground floor, people, other people fill their poly cart full of trash. And so that's what this does. It doesn't change any billing prices. It just gives us the flexibility to put the right container at the right address without breaking our current ordinance. So that's all this really does. Are there any questions?
So we will bring those two ordinances, if possible, if we're ready next time or whenever we're ready on the next agenda for you to consider. Good.
Did I keep my promise of two minutes?
You did, you did. Thanks, yep. All right, it's 21. Let's, let's gather again at 16:35, give people a chance for a comfort break. We stand adjourned.